...regular council meeting on Tuesday, August 18th, 2015, the border. Ask everyone to please carefully rise. We have the invitation of the county commissioner and the festival of Mary Lord.
Many who care for our country. Almighty God bless our nation as one nation of your God. He chests of liberty that is not only to be loved but also to be lived. Help us succeed in our liberties and the right to do as we please, but the opportunity to do what is right. Help us lift our hearts in gratitude for the gift of being American. Be close to our president, our statesman, and all those inhabitants tonight. May this great land of ours and all its people know clearly your will, and may they fulfill the destiny ordained for us in salvation of nations and restoring of all things under your almighty plan.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America, a nation of our own, individual, liberty, and justice.
Roll call.
Karen.
Here.
Conley.
Evan.
Here.
Lasky.
Here.
Mace.
Here.
Bartle.
Here.
The reading of the minutes of the regular council meeting on July 21st, 2015. If you wanted to accept the request. Question. Question from the nation by Tom. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those who don't. Yeah, aye, say aye. Before we go into communications, I just want to thank everybody for coming out here to the beautiful property of the western core area here. We have a recreation spot, and I would like Kevin and the team for relocating verbal council speakers to the Owl Creek Joe Billy. We did a nice job. We brought the Pennsylvania flag, the red flag, even brought my gavel, and the other nameplates. This feels like home. It feels like home. Now, the only thing I was missing was Mike Creek, and he's there now. So, you know, I was joking with Kevin that this was probably the first municipal meeting in Ron, that's held in Ron Township in forty-some years since the annexation of Ron Township. Thank you, Mr. Currie, too. So, it's nice there. There is no restriction on where we can have our council meetings. We cannot have it on a cruise ship, but, you know, we, 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 it's nice and convenient and regular. On a summer night, it'd be nice to come out here. Before we get into communications, I do want to ask Kevin to just talk a little bit about some of the things that are going on out here at the residential, since we're here today.
Sure, I'd be happy to. I actually spent the entire weekend out here with the scouts, the Boy Scouts, and we always have a wonderful time out here in the rural area, and we have a marvelous resource where we can go out and lay with the crews and kayaks and go boating. And the kids just have a fantastic time out here. But at any rate, some of the things that the Owl Creek Commission is working on, when you've been, when you came down the access road, you've probably noticed a big pad, a stone. That's where they want to put that sixteen-by-sixteen foot cabin. That's the area they have marked off for that, so we clearly rubbed that floor and laid the stone down. Now it's just a matter of gathers and volunteers together to reassemble the cabin. It's coming from a church camp. I can't remember exactly where, but it was donated from a group that goes through this church camp. And then, further up the road, right across from that big open field is a boat launch that one department's been building. It's, it's not ready to use just yet, but it's coming along. We have some more stone to haul there. But that would be, when it's all done, it would be suitable for backing that trailer, booting boat, whatever, right into the way and offloading it. As well as other, you know, passing watercraft, like, you know, hews, kayaks, et cetera. And of course, I guess, most important of all is both dams are now currently full. This one filled up rather quickly because it's smaller. The upper dam took, took much longer. That filled up, I guess it started overflowing about a month ago. And also, this Saturday, the Pennsylvania Forest Fire Warriors are having an event out here from nine a.m. to three p.m. And that would be at their fire tower, which you can see just behind me. We've got Andy and Al, a flyer on from that. So that's this Saturday. And there's been a number of other improvements in this area. Ticket booth was purchased there. There's a whole building behind you that was filled with funds donated by the Morgan Foundation. Tom Mattitelli donated the shed by fire tower for the forest fire people to use. And it's just a few of many improvements they'd like to make out here. And I have to give a lot of credit to the volunteers that are out here, paying the day out, cutting the grass and putting all these things together. They do a great job.
Kevin, are the reservoirs on the trust? I can list it all, Randy.
Oh, they've been stocked, actually, a couple times. I leave an agreement with the Fish and Boat Commission. In fact, they called me recently. They might want me to make some revisions to the agreement. They believe the one dam is on the agreement, but the other one may not be because it was draining in the agreement. So they're going to get me something to make sure that it's on. But they've, they've launched now a pass and boat, and bait fish, you know. And it's a, they have plans to put many of those species of fish in the old dams, you know, with the conch and fish and shiners and things like that. It's, it's like an ongoing process that they're not really popular with the dams. And surprisingly, some of the fish survive the draining. They, they live, you know, some of their little problems that were left on that. Is there a forage? Couple more fish in there, so, believe it or not. Anywhere, any questions?
And, um, this is my son, David, placed a bring-in to win the kayak and fish. If anyone's seen my Facebook profile picture, it's where he's holding up a bass on that way. It, it's gorgeous out there. I really, you know, we come down and hike a lot, and they fish a lot, and it's just fantastic. So it's very welcome to them.
Are there any catfish?
I don't think so. So their plans are trout, bass, and then like, kind of fish, and some fish, gulls.
Tunnies.
Yeah.
That isn't us, is it? We're also doing a bike track, you know, like that, the DNA bikes has involved a few officers that have been doing it for the last two months, I think, making bike trails. Not invasive, it's actually just stepping on the dirt, I guess, for the most part, but not really. That's pretty, that's pretty good.
Thank you, Kevin.
I, I would just like to ask, since we're on the subject of the correspondence, that we pull out the scout correspondence to the top.
Okay.
Since we're on the topic.
So we'll go into correspondence.
Okay. From the Black Rock District, Boy Scouts, Steve Danarovich, Camperee Chairman. Last year's Fall Camperee was a huge success, so much so that the scouts want to do it again this year. We are planning the Fall Camperee for the weekend of September 25th, 26th, and 27th. We have the full support of the Owl Creek Reservoir Commission, and we would like the approval and support of the Tamaco Borough Council. The details for the Camperee are the same as last year, as stated in last year's proposal. The only changes this year is in the scouting program on Saturday afternoon. We would like to make this an annual event at the Owl Creek Reservoir. The Owl Creek Reservoir is the best area in Sculpey County for holding this event. I sincerely apologize for not getting this budget to you sooner. Thank you.
Make the motion, we have requests, and Mr. Ben Arlison's letter.
Second. Somebody, Dave, second by Tom. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no? Yeah, aye, say aye.
Next is Land of the Running Water Marching Band Intercation Festival. Linda Mace, Chair, Local Band Director, Mark Belts, and Band Booster President, Day Caddisate. The Tamaco Area Band Boosters are once again sponsoring the Fall Marching Band Intercation Festival. This year's event will take place on Saturday, October 3rd. Showtime is six thirty p.m. in the Tamaco Area Sports Stadium. Arrival times for participating bands will be somewhat earlier. At the present time, we have responses from several high school bands as to their participation in the festival. We are asking the council to restrict public parking to no parking on both sides of Paul Street from Orexburg Street to Screw Street. If possible, the signs need to be in place the morning of the festival. The participating band buses will be entering and exiting the area to unload. Also, we will be receiving aerial assistance with lights from the run-of-the-loca fire departments for the warm-up area along the side of the high school. We'll be making arrangements with the fire police to provide us with traffic control for the evening. Current response from you is needed to confirm this request.
I'll make a motion for this to be some requests, or else it's cancelable.
I will second.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Aye, say aye.
Next letter is from Herb Curry. Please accept my resignation from the Civil Service Commission effective immediately. This will give you an opportunity to appoint a younger person to your new board. It was my pleasure to serve.
Make the motion to accept Mr. Curry's presentation letter.
Dave, second by a band. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor?
How long have you been on the council?
Four years, three years?
Really not short.
Three or four years.
Mr. Curry gave a library this letter, but I know that there's some health issues. I hope that's a lot of music for us.
Any other questions?
Would we, please, just sit here and let her thank you for his service. I believe, I believe you always did a lot of this.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And for the opposed, no? Yeah, aye, say aye.
Next is from Citizens Fire Company Number One, Fundraising Committee. Due to our ever-increasing need for fundraising and the success of last year's pig roast for both permanent, we would like to make this an annual event. This year it will be on September 19th. We are asking permission from council to close Heatherly Avenue on this date. Written approval is required for any above request, so we may attach it to our special occasion license application. Thank you, and if you have any participated cooperation with this matter.
Motion to reject this request. Question by Tom, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? I think it sounds like a great time.
It was.
Anybody else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no?
One last one is from Dan Codcavage, R.A. I intend to be at the upcoming Borough Council Meeting to relay some information relative to ABA on the above request, which is a pamphlet dollar installation. We appreciate a very short time in the public input segment, but that being to do so. This input is as a private citizen and I believe to be in the interest of the community.
Anything else, George?
That's all.
Girl manager.
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of quick updates to give of various projects. Although I guess this is for an Owl Creek, it might be nice to start with two proposals we have to do the annual dam inspection here in Owl Creek. We have, and I believe council, we have copies of those. We've received a proposal from Alpha Dam, as you know, who's been doing the dam inspection for the last few years. We also received one from Gannett Fleming, which does the Still Creek Dam inspection. We're wondering already, if you're there with me for a moment? I'll pull those out and read off the prices. These are, these are annual inspections required by the, and hopefully, since the dams are brand-new, there should be little or no issues here. I know that was the case last year. Okay. Their proposal for, Alpha Vanish's proposal for both dams is $3,950. And the proposal with Gannett Fleming is $4,700. So Vanish gave us the most, the lower one, too.
Make a motion to get it done.
We do a place.
Make a motion to pass the dam inspection on by Alpha Dam. Third management.
Second.
Question by Tom, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Just to clarify, those are for the upper and lower altar dams.
Yeah, both.
Any other comments?
Vanish was the, the, Vanish was the engineering company for the project, correct? Correct, correct, they designed the upgrades to both dams. And as far as the money to pay these, where does that come from out of the borough budget?
The Owl Creek Dams are paid out of the general fund, and we do much of the burden for this. The Still Creek Dam, it's paid out of one of them.
Okay. So just, again, just, I was wondering if it came out of the, thank you.
Yep. A few things that still come out.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no? And, and if they ever give us rights on doing the Owl Creek Dam.
No, the Still Creek Dam, we leave that to one of them. Yeah, since it's, so, one of them's small. Actually, they might.
Is that, they paid under bucks on before it was like, it's not.
If so, we, we order it to one of them. Okay. A few other quick updates on our demolition projects until or very close to being done. They're just polishing off some work of Screw Street with the re-rotation of the twenty homes. Just some very minor issues there, which expect them to be completely finished this Also, we opened bid for the sale of 319 Washington Street, as you might recall. Mike has set up a settlement date for that property. It's next Monday, Monday, the 24th. And also, oh, under sale property, a counselor made an offer to Conwell, purchased a lot on Center Street, that, I understand that the Conwell has prepared that deed, and they're sending it to us very shortly. We'll just have to schedule a settlement date, and then, of course, pay for the lot. As, as far, we just designated a fund to pay that out. George and I were talking about this, and we thought maybe the volunteer equipment fund might be appropriate, a fund to pay it out. So I'm curious what your thoughts were on that. We, we crunched a few numbers on this, factor in the current lease payment for this car, the anticipated lease payment for the equipment that, that is on order, and also the two pickup trucks that we were looking at also. And after all that, and paying for the lot, by the end of next year, there, we should still have a hundred thousand dollars to keep on.
You motion.
And then, well, police cars are three-year, but it's about draw-off, and we're here to deal with a pick and push in. That's factoring in the, the annual revenue of one mill, which goes into the fund, and then all those expenses that I listed. We thought that might be a good place to take that on.
Is there, is there a plan B to that fellow, or is that the possibility that you just pull these, all those roads, and this, and we, and we, and Mike, Mike knew as well.
Nobody knows about your letters. Is it, is it dead?
Well, I've been talking about some other expenditures at the last meeting, namely carpet for Pearl Hall, which also might be tapped out of building equipment. I don't have all my quotes for that just yet. I see two people coming, maybe on third. If you look at, doing four versus four, it lost the range of three bolts.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, take the, that sort of, wait another third. Please, please, two, eight. One, the second, on third street. Okay. Yeah. And third. Yeah.
I really, I probably won't pull a number out there.
No, I, I, yeah, I understand.
I understand that. Yeah, it's not, yeah, Kevin, is, is, was any other, as part of, as part of that process, I guess, that was something that I, I was going to ask you, start to compile this kind of a projected obligations out of building equipment fund. I know, I think part of that was driven by the fact that we did buy the wheel loader and then another truck. So, again, I wanted to try and project out over, I believe, that term, which is ten years, what the annual obligations are for that. Now, again, I realize certain things come in and come out, like the, like the police car will be, be coming out, but, you know, in some discussions, I guess I realized that we're also going to have to replace other police cars. So while that may fall off a year or two, you know, it might be back on in a year or two, based on usage and things like that. So that was the one thing I wanted to talk about. I guess the other thing I wanted to at least try and get a little bit better understanding is maybe the last year or two, what we have actually spent money on in terms of building and equipment, just to kind of get a feel for, is it more building and less equipment, or is it more equipment and less building, those kinds of things? Because, like I said, some of the things are cash expenditures, like the transfer of interior department, transfer that we did for the back home and stuff like that. So that is cash, and that just goes right away. I, I think that I would just like to sit down and start, start to compile some of those things, like, well, using that ten-year window on loader and truck move, just use that as a, moving forward on what we, what kind of monies we do have available. It's, it is nice, again, I think, you know, John Trudich, while he was on the council, had some foresight into some of these things, and it is nice to have some funds there, but there are many needs. I'm just trying to get a better idea of what are the best needs and what are our obligations.
We also have a request pending from the fire chief for Radiance as well, that would be possible expenditures for rebuilding the equipment as well, so.
And it is funding, what, any of the, any of the projects that you're talking about now in the borough, is the building equipment fund, or, or, you could, you could, you could have all the, either way, they could, they could, they could, building equipment fund is distributed, evidently, there's a mill on, and specifically designated, everything that we're talking about, it's all fine.
What you're looking for, I have a, a, yeah, in raw, sure.
Yeah, I guess I had just started to write some stuff down myself, which I'm sure you have, because again, you know, you know the budget better than anyone, so.
So you recommend we take that building.
That's what we, we thought, there should be no trouble absorbing it. It's a one-time expenditure. And I, I looked at a three-year projection, taking into account the two pickup trucks that we talked about also. Anyway, well, even with the carpet, I still think it'll, it'll be fine. And you figure that police car's going to drop off after next year. I, I still, yeah, I still think we'll, we'll be fine, unless we undertake some other huge projects that we're on. Okay, right. Yeah. What do you think, would it, does that make sense?
I don't know, yeah. There's a fallback with these capitals.
Anybody can make a motion.
I'll make a motion, Dave, for a hundred, that number this time. Unfortunately, I mean, if Kevin, George, is there a second, is there a second? More from the Tom second, other question? Tom, what's that? This is a classic case that everybody wants to buy, but nobody wants to pay for it, right?
It's got to come from, you know, we've already made the agreement to make the purchase of property. Yeah, I'm just going to need to remember this discussion, and down the road, if some things come up that we collectively view as needs for the borough as well, then we're going to have to take it somewhere serious, like a capital return down, down the line.
And just a reminder to continue, the council would continue the pod, that's so, it's very useful in that. Any other questions or comments?
Just that capital reserves available for any general fund purpose, it's sort of a, I guess, ring A funds.
Unincorporated.
Yeah.
Anybody from the floor, we should address the floor.
How much are we looking at? How much are we looking at?
How much is the total loss for that?
Oh, well, I don't have a number on the fees, like the recording fee and all that, but the purchase price of the lot is twenty-two thousand four hundred.
Any other questions? Not all those in, Dan?
Pardon, could you executively summarize the, the case in point, the investments on this?
The council in the past has voted to approve the acquisition of the property on South Center Street, where Ozak Pontiac used to be, from, from Tenda, for twenty-two thousand four hundred dollars. And so the council, we've made that motion in the past. This motion is to actually take what I was building any equipment.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Not? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no? Aye, say aye. Thank you.
Just a couple updates. If all goes well and whether holds up, we should including Screw Street tomorrow. It, it really, the railroads crossing, I don't.
Yeah, it's milk. It's, 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 yeah.
Yeah, we're at Center Street to South Center Street. And we had a, you know, a lot of support from, they were, they were very helpful.
Daytime, nighttime project? Is that going to be a daytime or nighttime project?
Daytime, yeah.
Yep. We're trying to avoid nighttime and evening because it has to be paused, you know. So we're, we're doing it half and half, so the transfer station still has access nearby.
So that's why you build so far.
Yep.
Okay, so you're going to pay the tracks up to Dr. Kraus, on the other side of Rare Wood Street. That's going to get paved, and then you're going to mill. That's going to get paved and then you're going to build, uh, the tracks down to Center Street.
Mm-hmm.
Wish we could hide this two houses.
So, if weather permits, uh.
It'll all be there this week.
Yeah.
The fourth day of spring.
Managed squeaking at the first full start. There was a couple glitches, but we were able, uh, well, wrong, wrong, uh, mostly, frankly.
There will be a lot of people praising that street business and, and, and.
Oh, yeah. The railroad was very eager to get it done, too, and they recognize how, how long it is.
Um, while they're in town, is there any chance they could fix the rail on Broad Street?
I brought that up many, many times to them. It looks like they removed a loose rail. That was the solution last time that happened. Um, they, they were very much aware of it. I want their attention every time they call.
Okay.
It doesn't rattle anymore. They took the rail away, that was rattling. But, uh, I don't, I don't like that's really, you know, the, the proper solution. Just keep telling me their, their maintenance staff is aware of it. So is the residents.
Yes.
A couple other quick things. Oh, um, we received a repository sale notice from the county. Uh, I got, uh, sent that to, um, it's for, um, the sale of one thirty-two, one thirty-four, Oregon Express Street. Um, uh, two years back, uh, it was about two thousand seven, two thousand nine, uh, those, uh, houses burned down and had to be raised. And, uh, since then, it's just been a vacant lot and we've been chasing after the current owner to get his grass cut, uh, which has become an annual event for us.
Semi, semi.
Or semi-annual, yeah. Um, well, I guess he, he chose not to pay the taxes a year or so later. It's now, uh, it's a repository. And there's a, um, uh, a bid, uh, you know, for one thousand thirty dollars for each block from Matthew Staller, uh, at Titus Road. Uh, this is, uh, the Matthew Staller who has, uh, the house calls in.
Kidney issues with, uh, kidney, co-issues with the.
Right.
Uh, they own two properties in one township. One is their home, uh, the other, uh, leaves a rental property. Uh, they all know the properties in the township and, uh, we have no history with them.
Make a motion to approve both sales. I have a question with David, second by Tom. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to regent this motion? If it's not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Okay, that's it.
Um, we, the county also sent us a judicial sale notice, uh, which we distributed for you, uh, tonight. Um, I eliminated a lot of the excess stuff and I just gave you a copy of the letter and the parcels are in Tamaki. Give me to read those all.
Sure.
Okay.
Look right into that camera when you do it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do my thing. Um, these are the teleprompters. Uh, okay, the parcels that are on the list for Tamaki are four West Rose Street, uh, thirty-three East Elm Street, two oh five Market Street, two forty-one Lafayette Street, three oh five East Broad Street, two sixteen Penn Street, uh, one fifty, one fifty-three and a half Penn Street, two twenty Hunter Street, sixty-four Bonway Street, twenty East Screw Street. I don't know if that's near the, the area that we're paving, incidentally. Um, three seventeen and a half Arlington Street and three sixteen Arlington Street. And to, uh, to no one's surprise, uh, they told four minutes ago, we split a lot of these as well.
This one on twenty East Screw Street, is that like the first or second house going up?
Right by the board paving, it's one of those.
We should buy it. They ripped it down.
Can we get both of them?
The other one's owned by Sean Henry. Uh, he's using it for storage.
Six hundred bucks, what's the price of Kevin?
Let me look at the full document, uh, see what those cards.
Can we loan them that money to buy that house?
Yeah.
Remember that?
You have to widen the road.
Yeah.
The list they sent us is so small, it's difficult to read.
We, we divided for eight, we, six hundred or twelve hundred?
Four eighteen.
Four eighteen.
Two sixteen Penn Street, that is the property that we've been having all the trouble with. Correct? The end of the row on the.
I think one column is costs and we have a quality one here, I think.
I'd make a motion if we buy that place. It's a nicer.
Two sixteen, we have to extend the judicial sale date on.
Judicial sale's right until October, October. So we do have a little bit of time.
I'll think about it. Boy, that's, uh.
The judicial sale would be at the top of the page on October second. We just, yeah, so, yeah, we have to register and, uh.
Maybe you want to.
Uh, it's, it's a, we did make a. Is there a second on the motion? It dies for lack of a second. We have, we have a little bit of time, we don't have the judicial sale, sale dates in it yet. Uh, my suggestion would be that council look at, look at these properties, everybody who lives in the neighborhoods. Let the neighbors know that the property is coming up for the judicial sale. That means all of the liens and back taxes and, uh, and, uh, any of the water source and garbage, all of that gets wiped clean and you, you pay the court, you pay the court cost. And so, um, unlike a, a sheriff's sale or a tax sale, you don't buy it with, with, it encumbered with, with anything that was owned on the property before. So, uh, look, if, if you could encourage people who live next door, across the street, in the same neighborhood, uh, to let them know that the properties are going, are going to come up for sale. They're going to come up for sale for these prices, somebody's going to buy it. And for these prices, you don't know who's going to buy it, you hope that there is, who's a good responsible property owner and, uh, we're going to make sure that our, that the people in the neighborhood and, and around the property know about it and have the opportunity to do that. If there's a property that's, that's, that would, has a public purpose that's there and down, it was a lighter property, or could have an intersection or something going to happen, or an actual playground, or a big kind of playground, uh, council has in the past acquired properties that judicial sale for that purpose. So I would encourage council members to take a look at these properties, physically take a look at these properties. And, uh, like twenty East Screw Street, if there's something that we're interested, we could look at it again. If the other half of that, if the double is owned by Sean Henry or somebody else, you, you're going to have a, a conversation with him. See what his plans are, what he does, uh, maybe he's interested in buying it, maybe he's up. Maybe he's interested in, in sharing the cost of several of them, who knows? So.
To, to that end, I would like to make a motion and authorize the borough manager to investigate, um, the cost of acquiring the property and potential positive demolition of the property, uh, for our next meeting. And I guess probably add to that as well, um, to have a discussion if you enjoy the property or to make my experience point with what his plans are, could be acquired that as well, does he plan to acquire, what would be his screws, et cetera.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Motion by David, second by Tom. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I think it's, it's nothing, just investigate the cost.
Can you just, sorry, can you just tell me, or tell us what the two columns are? The, you know, the.
I'm not sure. I printed this off the website, we'll need to read.
Right, I'm just curious if you knew what.
I think one is their costs, like advertising and stuff like that, and legal. And the other one, I think, is the month there.
Oh, okay.
But I'll get back to that.
Okay.
The list they sent us with the whole document is so hard to read.
And when do they post the date for the sale?
I, I believe it's, at the top, it's.
Oh, is this on the ten years?
It says judicial sale at ten two. The document we received didn't mention the sale date, but on the website, it did say ten two.
And that's not the fourth house?
Yes, it's usually in the big four, four one, here. It's a public argument, the highest bidder gets it.
Any other questions or comments? Comment, uh, two sixteen Penn, I believe, is on our demolition list currently?
I think it is. We've got a lot of trouble with that one.
These are the knowledge of the owner.
Right one.
That's preferred.
That's indeed.
There, uh, there's others, uh, three seventeen and a half is on our demolition list. It doesn't rank really high, but it's on there. Um, I think there was another one. Does that happen? I'll hold it. It's, uh, three seventeen and a half, I think, is a, is a real of a role. Jim Barrett lives next door. He's a three seventeen.
Do any of these qualify to be part of a PDG, a gun base take down? If we were to acquire them, or does that not work that way?
Typically, the CDPG funds for demolition.
But I'm saying if we were to buy, isn't there a certain area in the market where they can do that?
Or you can do.
They're not based on like, anywhere in.
Oh, is anywhere, then, then, oh, okay.
Yeah. Our only, uh, uh, I guess hoop or red tape to go through would be, uh, uh, if it's, uh, well, we, we have to, um, evaluate all these properties, determine, uh, the cost of rehab versus the cost of demo and send it to the state, uh, to the historic preservation officer for approval, whether or not it's a natural district. That's the, I think, the goal.
Did you want to add those two properties to your motion of investigation?
I'm sorry, uh, what, two properties again?
Two sixteen Penn. Two sixteen Penn and three seventeen and a half Arlington. Those are the other two that are on the ten motion.
Yeah, I did.
Um, that all right with you?
Yeah.
So we're going to, the motion is authorized, Kevin, to get estimated demolition cost, acquisition cost for those three properties. Any other questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to regent this? Can I confront the property again? Two sixteen Penn Street, twenty East Screw Street, and three seventeen and a half Arlington.
Or just being, you know, like, right, this is. It's something around double, yes, like.
Any other questions or comments? Uh, all of them in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, no. Okay, that's it.
Kevin, if you take upon yourself, investigate two other ones, you can report on it, that'll be okay. I'll compare this with our, our most recent demolition list, because there won't be, maybe one or two others. I don't want you to know. I guess aside from that, um, I'll just need, uh, at the last meeting, we talked about the proposal of the Wabash Creek inspection. Uh, uh, just, uh, need some input from council, uh, on how you feel about that, if you have any questions or.
Verification, I think, and what your number was going to be, and what, what the number was and what it's going to be.
Right. I could, I could run through that one quick, if you like, uh, just get that out.
Let, let me say something, I mean, there's going to be a big project on Wabash. And Pendoff's going to be putting in a new bridge and, uh, why would we wait until all of that's done and then sell it? Then inspection.
Well, that, that, uh, that project would only, in all respect, that's a covered about one percent of the cover. Yeah, a very small portion.
Yeah, it is a very small portion.
Just the area on the Broad Street.
What is your concern? Yours?
Well, I mean, they're going to be approved as well.
Yeah, but I, I feel if I'm not, if I'm following you, Dave, it's the integrity from New Kirk all the way through town. It's, you know, the project on, and on the Wabash is just great, basically, from the bank.
About sixty to a hundred feet.
To Demacia, it's great, and that's.
I was really thinking about that, twenty-three thousand dollars is going to cost the port, I think, they worked it off last year when they, when they.
Are working.
Twenty seventeen, three years.
Is integrity going to change in that portion? I think it's like Tom's saying, after the work is done, should we wait and do the investigator, the report after work is done? Because that area is going to change, is that what you're trying to say?
Well, I, I don't see that as the reason to not do that, it takes the overall project, it's. Yeah, we do listen to Wabash. Um, I mean, uh, we would just skip over the part.
I, I do.
They're performing clearly inspections, uh, and not as, and not as.
Just, the gist for that portion.
Just that area, the three oh nine, that's all they're concerned about.
We have a balance in the Wabash capital improvement fund at the end of July, two hundred eighty-one thousand over two hundred dollars. And it's specifically to make sure that, that, that town, that we expect it on a regular basis, things that aren't regularly, to make any down. Prove by a regular basis. Rarely does it make sense to wait, like, do improvements later, uh, when it comes to expense or, um, or the scope of what you're going to have. So I, I mean, I don't see any reason for why, unless there's an issue with, with proposing, uh, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't go ahead.
What, what is the nature of Pendoff's quarterly inspection? Is it that structural or in evidence or above? Uh, the structure of the bridge, so to speak. It's, um, dry stack still alive.
Right.
Uh, underneath. And it also crosses up that, uh, in the city of Lehigh and Broad. So they're expecting that as well. Uh, not as frequent, because that's, it's in a much, that's in better shape.
Right.
Uh, this area they're working on, obviously, is, I forget what ranking they were on.
Surely if there was a blockage, they would tell us, as part of their inspection.
I'm sure they would, yeah. Uh, every quarter, we, we, uh, post no parking, uh, we open that, we, and all, we're going to, so you get down there to our inspection. Uh, some of the stones have worn free and gone, all, uh, there's a little bit of shifting there, and that's what prompted this whole thing. Normally, they only inspect bridges, uh, once every two years. Including ours, they, they do ours, and other bridges also, uh, anything over twenty feet like, uh, maybe some of them.
Okay, the proposal list for how much is due to the inspection in the entire town?
The, uh, it's broken into two pieces, because that's how we did the inspection back in two thousand seven. Uh, so the one piece is, uh, let's see, ten thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars, what they call the lower section, which would be like a little library. Uh, the upper section is sixteen thousand three hundred fifty dollars.
So that's from New Kirk to the library?
Uh, well, Kane. Okay, Kane, yeah. Uh, yeah, yeah, roughly, yeah.
So.
And then, uh, I'll just read their scope of work, that might sum it up.
Okay.
Uh, work with consistent balling activity, agree to existing information, including the previous inspection report and new photos. Um, develop a plan with safety consultants for safe access to COVID, if follow OSHA compliance, any century, uh, rules. Um, share the plan with the Borough Emergency Response Agency if needed, coordinate with Borough and OPA, certify safety consultant for full inspection. Uh, whatever. Okay, for this, uh, particular. Uh, they expect the inspection will take a two or three days. Um, they'll create a baseline for one of the park, a plumber marking every fifty feet for reference. Uh, measure limits, uh, of areas in need of repair. Uh, support people inside, outside, or will be on site and in contact throughout the inspection. Uh, though people follow along at each entry point, maintain contact, because radios and cell phones and stuff are working there. Uh, following the inspection, our engineers will develop reports similar to the one in two thousand seven. It will document the affected areas with photographs and descriptions, will identify the location. Will identify the location and approximate extent of the current deficiencies, develop a repair strategy, uh, possibly including daylighting, meaning exposing, opening the tunnel, exposing it to daylight, taking, taking the tunnel off, other words, making it like a street. Uh, develop a preliminary cost estimate of these repairs improvements. An overall location plan will be developed showing the work areas. Uh, they also have, uh, us, some funds allocated in there to, uh, prepare and attend, uh, one meeting if necessary. Basically present the findings, uh. Right.
So can I just ask, so if we go ahead with this inspection, they come back with their report recommendation, are we then obligated to make any kind of improvements within a certain amount of time that will then come out of this fund? Or is that just, you know, these are the findings and we hope for the best?
We, we're not obligated to, but it's the right thing to do.
Right.
And if we lose the transition that we're bringing up, we're gonna, we're gonna end up with bigger problems, and we will be obligated.
I just didn't know if there was some sort of oversight, that if they found a problem, then we'd have to immediately.
There's no timeline.
Okay.
I think the answer's depending on what the deficiency found is.
Right, okay.
There's a thought, if you remember back in two thousand seven, when they did the inspections right after the flood, six, there were flooding problems there, and serious issues throughout the whole Wabash borough, and so we're going on almost ten years of that inspection and, and action.
And council at that time reacted to the creation of a Wabash fund to appropriate money for these types of activities. You know, but as far as obligation or, you know, this is just, you speak of obligation or whatever word you want to use, it's gonna be dependent on what the deficiency found is. Uh, if it's something that's like of the nature of a wall collapsing on Pleasant Road, that kind of requirements that we need a detention in our part, then we're probably gonna have to move quicker than something that, you know, might, you know, might allow us a little bit of time to react and develop a strategy for what the appropriate response is gonna be. But without that information, we're just playing a guessing game and reacting the next time we have one, yeah.
And how soon could they be good?
Uh, well, we didn't talk exactly to them, but, uh, I mean, it would be this year, in the next, you know, for true. Would this affect any businesses or residents in here? Uh, Dave, and then you can be aware of its own part. I'd make a motion.
Unless you're near the, an, an entry point.
Make a motion to approve the, uh, two numbers given for the two phases in the project, and please refresh, I know it's ten and sixteen, but. The specifics, I don't remember exactly. Oh, the exact number, yes. Uh, the one is, uh, ten thousand eight hundred seventy-five, uh, the other one's sixteen thousand three hundred fifty.
Carrie, anybody have any questions or comments?
Let me say something about that. I don't know, but one councilman sits on the library board, uh, for some kind of reason, and I sit on the library board and library has a concern about the Wabash as it crosses their property. There is, uh, digging home from the grass in the library, side of the library, down through Wabash, and the borough opened up a fence. And I talked to a couple of people about it, and they said the best thing to do would be the daylighting. Is that money available from his fund, daylighting?
Uh, we looked at that option, uh, a while ago, uh, I don't remember the cost, but Benish gave us an estimate, uh, just daylighting and it's rather costly.
So it's more than a little bit thousand dollars, they had?
Yes, yes, quite a bit more.
Their recommendations are even from out of this, are the far scene that we have. So we will have to clarify our, uh, people.
Pretty simple, the library.
That would be, that would be, that would be one of the projects that they would have.
Library is very interesting, you know, what they find and what their recommendations on their property.
That's the one place where we know we have an issue. You know, there's an obvious hole there, and it's gotten a little bit big. And we, you know, we maintain the fence, keep people away from it. But that's the one spot we know we do have an issue with. We're curious, are there any other spots where we had issues, like six, uh, the last inspection or eight years ago?
Seven years ago. Any other questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this comment?
Um, daylight.
You want to bring it up?
Yes.
Take the top of the total.
Okay, let me sure.
Dan?
From the nature of the proposal, does it include any mapping, physical mapping? And also, does it deal with, uh, investigation of possible illegal sewage discharges, or does it ignore that one?
I mean, uh, when we go through it, we find any discharge, we're sure to bring it toward our attention.
Well, does it look for them?
Uh, I'm sure they would do that if I told, if I told them to do that.
Does the current.
It cost us anything.
Does the current cost include.
We had talked about.
Include the sewage, uh.
No, we had talked about it. But I'm sure if I said, let us know, and we'll, and our, all accompany them on the inspection.
Have, have the previous investigations dealt with, uh, possible illegal sewage discharges?
Not, and not, not the ones that finished and had other, other people in the tunnel twice, not, and we've identified.
And are, are there any other, are there any remedies that have taken place or that would be opted for that would, uh, be other than just citing the, the illegal, uh, connections?
They, they, they've all connected except for, I know the South Dehigh Street did not connect.
That's property.
South Bruce Street.
On Bruce Street isn't connected.
Yeah, that was Bruce.
No response from the owner.
So there's a, there's a few vacant properties that have not connected, all of the other ones that were identified.
All right, and is it, pardon all the questions, but this is Mr. Citizen asking, uh, is it a passive, uh, uh, observation or an active observation of possible sewage discharges?
Active observation. We have a shortage of these by the way. They go, they go through with their eyes closed. The borough council, the borough doesn't have a very good reputation for, for seeing things that are, for when it comes to illegal.
And, and if you're considering daylight, you have to consider pathogens.
So it would be, it would be inactive.
And I forgot the answer, is there, are they coming up with a map, a real map of, of the end result?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
And they did last time.
Thanks for the clarification. I just realized, I'm the only civilian here, I thought, uh. No, well.
The second one.
No, well, they, pardon me, you know, they came to my longer company and, uh.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, one, I have one last one, uh, Kevin, do you have any other GIS mapping that we undertake in any other part of the borough? Sewer system, uh, Anna Cummings, so comparing and updating sewer map.
Which is streetscape?
For us. The, the, the point being, I don't know if this would add to the cost or not, but if there were things that you could identify and, and the data's pointed out mapping, uh, locate via GIS, I don't know if it's possible to do that inside a tunnel or not. Oh, um, oh, I see what you're saying. Uh, it was mapped by the Army Corps then, years, years ago. Probably before GIS. Yes, yes, and it's very detailed, elevations, um, you know, widths, heights, elevations, like, it's very detailed. And that's what I gave Benish as a basis for the project first time around. Okay. So they have that overlaid on, on an aerial map of the borough. Okay. I don't know if there's any advantage to trying to know the specific location of deficiencies via that format or not. If there is, and it's something that we need to include in price, I think we, you know, we do ourselves a service to investigate that. If it's gonna significantly inflate the price, then wrong. Oh, yeah, they would know where the deficiency is in relation to surface elevation. Okay. Where it's, where it is. Okay.
Any other questions?
Can you condemn a house for, uh, putting their sewage in a Wabash?
Uh, I guess, I think that's a question that's left to Mr. Greek. I think so far has been the final citations in the magistrate. We have five that never connected.
In the bacon?
Uh, yeah. Yeah. Water's turned off, vacant.
But they're already connected.
Well, you, yeah.
It was very, it's two points.
Yeah.
I don't see if you're gonna have the age to say, you know, they have to, we have to, you have to, you have to.
Andy, you have a question?
Yeah, just to confirm, yeah.
When would they start it?
Yeah.
They don't have a front.
I mean, this year, I'm sure.
The proposal also was dated many years ago. It depends on.
Weather, too. Okay. Where you have a lot of rainfall, like you get weathered high, if you're the water.
Any other questions or comments? If not, anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Uh, well, uh, the only thing, other thing I want to mention is it'll be time soon to, uh, work on our insurance, uh, policy rules, anarchy, all contracts. I'll be working on that, uh, over the next month or so. And aside from that, I'd like to. But we got a lot of conflict, uh, so.
I don't want the meetings getting, it could have been insignificant.
Soon we get the intent, I guess.
Kevin, uh, Tom asked when we'll start the project on, late September. Although in some way, I think about your, your long, certain objective, like, we're gonna do more of a Wabash.
Kevin, if I may, before we move on, we are in the seat of a bid for, uh, an engine transmission. Is that something that we should be acting on, or is that bidding period still open, or? Uh, we, we did advertise it, uh, it's one of those, uh, low-cost items that the Building Equipment Committee would just negotiate twice. Uh, we, we, uh, there was a resolution adopted, uh, a lot of that, uh, uh, I believe it's due to a lot by the borough, over. I'm sure Mike will correct me if I'm wrong. So would be appropriate for us to act on this, or is the bidding period still open? Uh, you can act on it if you're aware.
Danny, is the Building Equipment Committee ready to act on that?
Uh, I saw a couple of emails about this, uh, I believe this was a motor that we originally intended to use as a replacement of a Camel, and since, uh, the water authority is purchasing a new, uh, Camel, uh, this engine has become surplus, and we'd like to get rid of it.
Okay, right, it's the only bid we have, right? What's the weight? Hmm? What's the weight? Uh, I don't know, uh, Rob said, um, we wouldn't get this much for added to scrap at price, that much I can tell.
Question asked.
I knew where you were going. Uh, I guess we wouldn't get that much for scrap.
Scrap's down to about two, two bucks a hundred, right?
And you want to wait for other bids, or are you comfortable in acting on this one?
Uh, I would, uh, take Kevin and Rob's, uh, recommendation. Move this to, I think, that's.
Okay, so are we on to committee reports? Commander speaking, I guess.
We're not. But we could be, you could make a motion.
We can make a motion.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion to sell it for that price?
I, I would make that motion, David. Okay, what we're talking about is we have a bid for, uh, a CAT thirty-two oh eight engine and transmission for four hundred and sixty-five dollars to, to sell. And I would make a motion to, uh, I'm sorry, from Joseph Promiak of Brockton, and, uh, I guess he's representing jet contract, I would make a motion to accept that bid.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Dave, second by Dan. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor, what's that?
Four sixty.
Price? Four sixty-five.
Four hundred and fifty.
Proceeds to go to the Building Equipment Board. Is it, is it an old piece of equipment?
An engine transmission, just an engine and transmission.
Oh, engine.
If you offer us five hundred, if you can take it home.
Wabash.
Anybody else, anybody, anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it. Anything else, Kevin? Okay, chief of police, Mary, does the chief send the reports? He does have some reports in the packet, in the department. Committee reports, Public Safety Committee.
It's, uh, Public Safety, Brian's absent tonight, I guess I'll do the honors, uh, I would like to thank Mr. Herby for his, uh, service to, uh, the Civil Service Commission. Like to make a, a motion to appoint Janine M. Holter to the Civil Service Commission to fill the unexpired term of Raymond Medeski.
Motion by Dan, second by Carrie, anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor?
We do every second, I'll pick it down.
Anybody, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
We also did receive letters of interest from two other candidates for, uh, a position that we just filled, given that we have the, another alternate on the Civil Service Commission, but make a motion, well, I would recommend that we, um, candidates that we've already received, and to that, I'd make a motion to appoint Howie Miller, uh, to serve the unexpired term of, uh, for Herby in the Civil Service Commission.
Second?
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Dave, and second by Dan, to appoint Howie Miller to the Civil Service Commission. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion?
Just to clarify, he has submitted a letter of interest for a position as well.
Anybody else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it. Anything else under Public Safety, Dan?
No, thank you.
Any other committee reports?
Yes, Hurricane Traffic has, um, a motion, I would like to grant a handicap parking permit for Solenas Schmidt of thirty-one Hinter Street.
Second. Motion by Carrie, anybody have any questions or comments?
Yeah, this is the one that's been a routine, correct?
Yes. The, uh, the borough doesn't have any laws against, like, any color, uh, cannot establish your own handicap permit. And we determined that, lock. We determined that we would lock his lawn, and add a second one to the side of the park. And this wasn't, this wasn't an attribution that we denied, it's just something that we, it was tabled to go through the application and make sure that the, that the block was, you know, that it was in motion.
Well, while it's at, at the, I guess, possibility of making this point new based on the actual promotion, when he painted the curb, he did create his own handicap permit, and he put Howie, he put signs on the house.
That's why, that's why I said that it's not illegal to paint your sidewalk.
He painted with the sidewalk, he painted the curb as well, which is our virtue to paint it that way.
Well, when I spoke to Mr. Schmidt, I made it very clear to him that he had taken streetscape money that had paved his sidewalk, and, you know, caused some hurt feelings there with the blue. Um, I had asked him about removal of the blue, and it is, it's his prerogative, he said, he stays. I feel whoever installs his parking sign may also want to just reiterate to Mr. Schmidt that he does not have ownership of that street, it is.
Or the space.
Or the space, for any individual who is having that. Um, I tried to relay that information to him, that no one of us owns a street, a parking spot, you know, so, you know, he understood that, and I, I know his concern is just because of his physical disabilities. And the ongoing issues with the neighbors is not helping him, I understand. But he was very compliant, he's going to remove the barrel, he's going to remove all the signs. Um, so that's kind of where it stands right now.
A statement goes in all our handicap legal letters, that it can be used by anyone with a handicap later, prior to.
And, and the best approach with him, you know, I said, Mr. Sch- And, and the best approach with him, you know, I said, Mr. Schmidt, let's just get you a permit first, and let's just take it one day at a time. Let's just see, you know, let's not put the curb before the horse, let's just kind of see what happens.
As, as far as, uh, the motion, or you would do a motion to approve the space, if you seconded it? Uh, I typically send the letter out, uh, based on the, if the action we take. Uh, could I impress upon you guys to consider adding the language in this particular letter, the borough request that he removed the blue paint from the sidewalk?
It's, but he's not obligated to.
I believe so. I heard you worded right.
Well, I, I did, but, so here's some of the ramifications that could happen. Kevin and I spoke about this briefly the other day. He used top heavy-duty paint, not just your latex. We had talked about sandblasting, color, washing. I said, we would, we would prefer you to remove the paint. And he said, I'm not gonna do it.
I believe whether he does or, whether he acts on the request or not, the borough should be on record that he preferred it to not be there.
Robert asked him.
Do you wanna include that in your motion? Or do you wanna vote on it separately? We have a motion on the floor to approve the handicap parking permit. You could, you could amend your motion to approve that in the letter granting the space to.
So what is the repercussion if he refuses?
It's not.
But aren't we already on the record, Kevin, by having that go out and by having our piece go out, that we have requested he remove not only the paint and the signs and the barrel?
Which doesn't do right.
Certainly no, certainly no action would count.
Well, then let's, let's amend the motion to include verbiage.
To request.
To request that he remove.
If the story.
Right.
And you're okay with that? Kevin, who said? Any other questions or comments?
So, who owns the sidewalks?
He owns the sidewalk. The borough has, the public has a right of way, the borough has a right of way.
And that really owns the sidewalk.
And even if you don't own it, your store's fine, that's for it. You know, construction, reconstruction.
Any other questions or comments? Dan?
And, and as a clarification, what is the reason you were asking him to remove the blue paint on the concrete?
He's part of the streetscape area where we installed uniform sidewalks through that, through that block. And so we just prefer that they stay in.
Thanks. Actually, on that note, um, actually, um, there was reworded the handicap sign through, I mean, I was just saying, to clarify. Some people know this, if anybody part there, there are lots of things, not only this address, a lot of, a lot of addresses. They don't know, they don't know that it's open to anybody with a handicap, the application. No, application, I'm sorry, people that want to part.
Javelin.
Oh, Javelin.
I myself didn't know, so it's, I mean, you think this from front of property, they go handicap, forces one to that person. Not knowing that you could, to one block and not, you know, saying, could you possibly, um, add it, sign open to, find some other sign that says open to anyone?
The, the sign already says it's open to any, anybody with a handicap.
It says anybody.
No, it doesn't have any words at all.
I know, but they gotta.
It's an international symbol for handicap parking.
I know.
There is no, there is no international symbol for handicap parking in what we need.
No, I mean, for.
Like, Andy, it's just like if you go to Walmart, you know those front spots with the symbol are for handicaps accessible only.
I do, I, I don't, do people think that way for private property?
But he doesn't have ownership of the street.
I know, that's what I mean.
Yeah, he doesn't have ownership of the street.
See, I'm saying.
When you get a handicap plaque or a handicap thing, that, that gives you the right to park in the, in the block that we, that we call a handicap park. And then, and the way we designate it, putting that aside, if you don't fully understand it, I don't know, but adding additional, we're running. We just gotta.
Okay, and, uh, another thing, that since that blue paint, does that create, create a, um, a hazard, is it slippery?
I think so. I think it's, he's on a slope too. And he painted his concrete sidewalk, I think he's asking for a liability.
I would paint my sidewalk.
Yeah.
Never, if, if he hadn't gotten the stone yet.
Silking the cone?
Yeah.
Cone enforcement, will you look at that?
It was brought to his attention.
But cone brought to his attention.
I think he's asking for problem. There's no cone enforcement that we're aware of that would help him remove the paint.
Not, not, not safely.
It has to be the mortgage or code.
This.
They follow it on after. I strongly recommend people don't paint their concrete sidewalks if you're asking for a problem. Even if you put sand in it, it, it comes off eventually, and it gets slippery.
And what, what else? I've just, no, obviously, yes.
And especially with such swearing off, it, it, you're, it's, it's gonna really happen.
Yeah. There's no one here in favor of either of us, or either side.
Anybody else have any questions or comments about this? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Howie Borland, as I mentioned, our staff has a very nice job responding to neighborhood complaints and members of property owners. Who just roll in. And includes a lot of borough staff, folks, employees, and members of, and we do so very professionally and very well. We appreciate that. Any other committee reports?
Just as an information item, uh, Buffalo Blue will be closing this Sunday, uh, for the season, uh, it's the twentieth twenty-third. And I'll thank the staff for, uh, Adrian and, and Matt and, uh, the guards for an excellent season. I've heard very few issues from top police inside the pool, and obviously, we had a very challenging event in early July as well, uh, that Dave responded to as well as the members of the water department. So, uh, thank all of them for their efforts in that particular instance once again.
Did you use that? I did not. Who?
John.
Oh, John's there, yeah, I, I didn't invite him.
Recreation Youth Committee on November twelve.
I didn't see you back. Uh, did you like? You know why, you know why you care?
I don't, but I thought maybe with the Recreation Youth.
It wasn't.
It wasn't.
He is under, I thought I emailed him. I had made a suggestion a couple months ago to, uh, make an outreach brochure. And Kevin, uh, had suggested that we have John do it. So, uh, we never met John, so I thought I would have to come to the outreach meeting tonight. So can you introduce yourselves?
John's, Justin, he's asked.
Oh, he has?
Yeah, he asked. Uh, but John, if you wanna report, I guess, on any, um, progress that you made on the brochures that, uh, Mr. Kerry was talking about.
Uh, yeah, um, it's, uh, coming along now. Kevin just emailed me some, uh, pictures today from, uh, the work that was done on it, um, uh, the ongoing project. And I came down a couple weeks ago and took some pictures of just what it looks like now and everything. Um, and also he sent me some information about, uh, plot, like how the project benefited the community and stuff, so all that'll be in the, in the brochure as well.
I, I have, um, there's a person from Alfred Bennett, who was in charge of the engineering on the camp. I mean, uh, and she's very knowledgeable about what they did, and I think she's the most, have a history of it.
Yep.
She has a lot of history. Here's her name, and, uh, maybe you could get ahold of her and, and she could give you some useful information.
So I was recording the gentler full lot.
But John, what is your last name? I'm Lorikee.
Are you, I, I wanna check, he's from Long Carmel, so he had.
Twenty minutes back again.
In the daylight.
In the daylight. So she can, uh.
What would be the intention of the brochure?
And will we have, this is for people to know, this is a reservation of the resource itself.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's meant to showcase the opposite chance of people's walk.
Is there, are you gonna be able to put that on social media or some way that we can share it?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And I'll put it up on, on our website, I'll email the final product to, to whoever wants it, if you put it.
Thank you.
I mean, if you have any suggestions for, um, it, are you gonna include like, uh, a map, uh, pictures from the air, uh? How many pages, three hundred, four hundred?
Um, it depends, uh, I'll, I don't have a set plan for it, I was just gonna pretty much get all the best information I can get and, and put it in there. Um, but, well, yeah, if I, if I can get a, a map of it from above or whatever, I'll, I'll put it in there.
And when do you, when do you have, wanna have this ready, or you don't have this ready?
Uh, I mean, I'm, I'm working on it right now, so, I mean, hopefully within the next couple of weeks it'll be done.
I think that is something that the municipal county's district bureau would like to maybe include in their yearly brochure book. That would be a very nice feature for this end of the county.
Municipality, so the McArthur Borough folks, the, the county visiting borough, we see things like this, the Sweet Harold Lake.
Right.
Uh, we got grant funded from Pennsylvania and also, I believe, from, from the United States, it's something like funding team, too, wasn't it, some of it? Was it all state funding, all state funding? So, I mean, is this something we also wanna share with, um, state conservation?
I hope there's anybody that you would wanna hold back on.
That's right, cause I'm just reaching out, how far do we go, what would be the intention of this grant?
Even though it's very successful in the communities, I think there's a lot of people who still just don't know what they can do here, uh, they might not know what they can propose on, on, uh, to, to reply.
I mean, people might not know that there's like a road around each, each bend of the block, and there's a couple walking trails, and you, they don't know. Kevin's gonna have his son, his son's gonna be getting Eagle Scout project on some of the trails, and he can look for the, for sure, right, out in front of that pass.
Actually, we're gonna, we're, um, sort of change, we're looking at maybe do a bridge.
Oh, yeah, and that.
Back there, out there, replacing that bridge.
I'm gonna talk about my sneakers. I was gonna talk about my sneakers.
Yeah, it is.
Still was a good time, reminded me about you.
It's a little sloppy back in there. But that, uh, sixteen feet, you're looking at building which could cause those later pies to, to cross that side. But that's, it's still in here.
John, thanks for coming tonight, John, thanks for, I look forward to seeing it. Any other committee reports? Here's a report. Anybody from the floor which would suggest else about anything in the picture? Dan?
We did, did.
We did read the letter, we read the letter earlier.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't take it here, go ahead, man, I'll, I will later.
I wanted to address the issue with, uh, the dirt road coming out of, uh, if there's a name, damn, you tell them, damn. Every time it rains, the rocks spread down Fifth Street, and the sidewalk is called Lower Roy Conne. And I know people that park on Fifth Street have rolled on the, the stones. And I have that problem coming down with the hover on. One day, I'm upset on the street, and two guys picked me up. And there, there should be something that can be done so all the lost stuff that come down, wet and rainy.
You take a look at that.
I know what you're talking about. In a heavy rain, you get a, um, debris.
Is that correct, the property?
It's, uh, how was it there?
We have a couple areas like that around town.
There's a few trouble spots, we get a collision, and, uh, mud and stones, and you have a few spots. Well, uh, along Woodbrook Street.
Zero plate, yeah.
Where the cross, the cross streets can, uh.
Thank you. Anybody else? Dan?
The, um, thanks for serving, thanks for being here.
Thank you for.
So is that much, is that, you're.
I, I understand, I'll, I'll, stay at that. No, thank you. Um, the, and thanks for opening the prayer and the prayers a little bit, please, so thank you for all, all that, uh, uh, and the, uh, the issue, uh, and this is as a citizen. I, I hold the, uh, the secretary of position of the, uh, Boston Building and Fields Board current, currently. But this is, uh, as a citizen, uh, I'm not convinced that the family dollar installation will end up handicap accessible. That's after a little bit of investigation, and only by observation from, from, from the street. The, uh, I realize, and one, one reason I'm here is, I understand that you have, through your attorney, direct influence into that matter. You have gone on record asking, asking certain things with regard to sidewalks and so, so forth. But that's really all I wanna say, that, that, and it, and it should be handicap accessible. Uh, that is, uh, that, that's the focal point of the, the Gateway Project in Ohio State. It's near, uh, 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 the park over there, the Lilling Memorial Park, uh, the, uh, uh, River Walk, and, uh, and it, it should, it's in close proximity to, to the high-rise. And I would ask you, uh, and maybe not any, any answers can come out of this, if you were a handicap person living in the high, high-rise, wheelchair-bound, or even across the street, next to that bar, for that, that, the residential, how would you get to that score? I, I mean, the, 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 uh, the sidewalk that is on borough property, this, I'm not faulting the developer, I'm, I'm glad that they're serving the, the people there. It, it's on, it's on the borough right of it, that's not conformed, and, uh, I, I don't see it, it being ADA accessible. But beyond that, from that sidewalk, which you asked terminated the loading dock, but where do you go? How do you get to, uh, is the Rite Aid there? And I, and I, I'm looking at Micah there, and, uh, a younger Micah, uh, when he served on the planning commission, had enjoined in a great battle to get Rite Aid to do something with sidewalk and not back out on the, on the street. I thank you for that.
We lost that battle, too.
We did, we did, and I won't go into that, but, uh, we, we tried, and, uh, we shouldn't give up now. It's such a key area of the borough, there are a lot of people, you know, wheelchair-bound, uh, you know, and, uh, needing things like that. You'd have to fight traffic, you know, or, or buy a fifty thousand dollar van to transport you up into the landing spot at the top of the hill there. I realize why it's up there, it's a, it's a flight plane, and the, and the designer's elevated. Like, just ask yourself when you go by there, how do you get from here to there? How would you, uh, you know, want your, your, your wife or your, 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 your child to, to access the, uh, and, uh, that's on the outside of the building. My, my investigation continues, you know, whether there's smoke, there's fire with the cooperation of, uh, the building department. I'm just wondering what's going on in, in, inside and, and other issues around there, but that's what got my attention, just passing by there and, uh, and seeing, seeing that. But thanks for asking for, for, I realize that they have yet to redo the sidewalk, and we're not talking about, uh, the Broad Street, that, you know, that stumble in history someday, and there'll be a new sidewalk hidden there. Uh, and, but, um, how would you get there, I ask, and that, that's the only, the only question. No answers, just posing a, a question here to Earl Council, as you are involved, as you have gone on record, uh, in that, that, that issue, beyond the, beyond the, uh, planning and so forth. Thank you, servant.
Thank you. It's a, it's a good point, and it, it, it really highlights the importance of the planning commission, and the, and the work that we do, and plan before they go, uh, before the shovel hits the ground. Because what, it's much more difficult than what, what the construction. We'll, we'll refer this and, and talk with our, uh, with our, our building permanent officer about the, and, and, and to. Anybody else on the floor?
I'd just like to add that I agree with what he's saying. When I'm going down to Rite Aid, goes through Burt King, to the car wash, and down that way, down by the park, I mean, and that's. And then, and that's how I would get the family dollar too. Lots of times I'm on the sidewalk and one guy has cement, the next guy has potato, the next guy has just dirt. So, you can't drive a motorized care or a regular real car.
And it's a very busy pedestrian area. There's a lot of people traveling. Anybody else on the floor wish to address counsel about any issue? Ed?
I guess it was sort of outside of the family dollar parking lot. You know, those, anything about, can I pick it up? On the first king, the very king?
The cement barrier?
Yeah. Put that out. All right, never mind. That's, that's not quite as, that's not the time now. When is School Street broken in?
To work on.
The city?
Yeah. We've got these four school sites.
The four school sites.
Depending on the weather.
No, it's good.
Girl, so.
All right, also done in regards to three properties. Was that, um, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the demolition, the motion was made for demolition and acquisition?
Uh, motion was made to, uh, to ask that the borough manager investigate the cost of the acquisition and demolition.
Okay, okay.
So, we didn't approve to buy or demolish. We just asked Kevin to, for the next council meeting to come back with a report on what it would cost.
And, uh, who else? Oh, um, Kevin, I missed that. He emailed you a picture a while back. You asked me, you emailed me about that gap between the out creek and the bridge. Remember that email? A few months ago. You had it, it was separated.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we had our idea, uh, you could look at that, uh, just, uh, that's normal.
Okay.
Just, uh, it's normal.
And then the last thing is the credits. And you didn't.
Can't help you with that.
You're louder than they are.
Solicitor's report. Counselor members have various reports of the department of the borough.
Motion was set from this morning.
Most of it Dave, second by Jerry. Anybody have a request or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone who pulls a no? Unfinished business.
This ordinance, certification project, Kevin had sent all of us an email and, uh, I guess an electronic copy of the, uh, information he bought from this certification company. I took the liberty to make copies for everybody and if you would. Would you get one? Where are you concerned? All right, I have to. You think, I think that. Did you, actually, Mike, it's in the.
This one, this, I think it's just in the back.
All right, okay. Everybody, Mike, you have, you have a book.
I'm going to go with you.
Okay. So, there's three, there's three books like this. I thought Mike should have a book, Kevin should have one of these books, and Barry Eisen should have one of these books. But for the rest of us, and Tom, I think you have one. So, if you think, my idea was, and they recommend in the, in their paperwork here, to have a workshop and go through these questions. Let's do two things about the workshop. If you have a workshop, we guarantee that a lot of things are done. If we just ask people to go through it, you know, some of us may have time to do it and we keep pushing things on the side. So, me personally, I'm in favor of having a workshop to go through these questions. And they are giving us a timeline when they want these questions done. They want these questions back in October. And the solicitor must review all of our questions, so, um, Mike would need them, you know, a week to, toward the deadline. Now, I hope you want to have a workshop. You want to take these home, ask them to learn their own. If we do have a workshop, it would need to be very efficient. Kevin has a concern about if you have a workshop, that some of these questions you would not be familiar with and you would, well, what's this about? And we're possibly needing to drag on. I mean, there's specific things here for specific, there's specific things here for people on Borough Council. So, if we could do it without going off the track and just fulfilling our curiosity about things, the meeting would be a little shorter. There's a few pages here and I went through and I think I'll pick the questions. Some of them, I mean, like what color the binder should be and what color the cap should be on the binder. I mean, that, obviously, Kevin and Georgia. Again, I don't want to, it would be crazy though. Dad wants to go white, Tom wants green and gold.
Well, if Mike can make a suggestion, I think we should have a workshop and go through these questions. Um, but I think the best use of time to make it not as, as one meeting if we get into a lot of discussion of all the questions is if these council members can go through and answer the questions on your own, the way you believe they should answer. You get the question, you get to get your question to Kevin or Josh, or, 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 or Mike, or anybody else at the borough who can answer the question. And I think if we all come to the workshop, which is filled out, other than the color of the binder, there's, there's likely to be consensus that already comes into the meeting. Um, the boxes, you can go through, you can check the boxes, you can make notes on it and get the questions to ask if you're prepared. So, um, you know, and I, and I think councilors is, is, is smart enough to go through this and figure out, you know, most of it. And there might be some questions about what it's, I think also, you know, it's, it's just something that we need to, uh, you know, go through and, and, and make a decision. So, I, I think, I think a workshop is necessary. If we dish this to Kevin or Georgia or Mike or the code enforcement officer, you know, we're, we're gonna be the ones that are probably responsible for it. But council meetings, so, I don't know. And then maybe we could do a little, the first two states, September, September 11th, we have a workshop. If we keep it as a regular council meeting, it could be the, the agenda.
On page seventeen there is one about fire departments. There's stuff you can look through in there. There's one in here from, uh, comfort stations. I gotta kick that out. I remember comfort stations are a little bit. That's from nineteen fifty. And he spoke about that one?
Yeah.
Fifty thirty-two and, uh, and, uh, the.
That was, uh, it was codified in the seventies.
Oh, and it was done in the.
As far as I know, most, yeah. We have a blue binder, that's the code of the law, but that was done in the seventies. So, lots, so lots changed since then. So, you know, we're doing the first.
So, we'll meet on the first Tuesday in September for a regular council meeting. And if you have a motion, we'll put the motions on the agenda, but if, if, if the motion can wait until the, to the second meeting. But we prefer to do that so we can, and, and over the next two and a half weeks, you get a chance to go through this.
So, so there were some people that should be invited to the meeting, like, uh, Barry Eisen. Fire chief. It's a fire chief? Uh, I mean, we need somebody for this department?
Yeah.
So.
You could have, you. I'll be mine.
Oh, yeah, you know, yeah. Tensions and. Okay. You may want to throw that out, check it out.
All right. September, that's September first.
Oh, it's two weeks.
Is that when?
Yes.
September first, right. Yeah, well, restricted on real estate, we talked about earlier, the fifteenth and after that. I didn't know we said the next meeting, but I think we need to add that to the agenda of September first meeting.
I think we can, we can find that on, you know, on Friday.
Do they have, everybody does their homework?
That's ambitious, we must.
We should, we should be able to get through it.
Yeah, the way our days go.
An hour and a half.
Very ambitious, yeah.
Well, then we'll have time to talk about it.
Hours?
Yeah.
Any other unfinished business?
Or any more?
Uh, I think you remember, um, well, quite some time ago, we had a request to install a school, um, down at, uh.
People's Square.
Yeah. Actually, we, uh, asked to replace the railroad street parking lot.
At the police house?
Yeah. Uh, it looks like that might act as a common on Saturday. Just in case any of them, uh, who are in Hawaii, down there throwing in their plans or, uh, that's a way to have a parking lot. Looks like that might be put together on Saturday. Weather permitting.
How big is the building?
Well, it's four sided and I think it's eighteen. And it's in different languages, um, it's, we're going on. Hey, I wanted to do it, um, before, um, these, for national, these, uh, which is September twenty-first, I believe. I just want to make, uh, if, if you want to, you know.
Any, any other unfinished?
In the president, at the meeting, I brought up another question, I want to work this radio. Still agree with that. Another potential need to the, that fund. I'm not on that beginning, but you were talking about a number of potential laws and then cameras.
Tom, how was it important to have a radio?
The radio. Why do the police chiefs need, or why do the police vehicles need a mobile? Same, same reason.
And it's not eligible under any of the other, the county.
Two grants we got, it's not, not a, not a chief vehicle. It's not already covered for the ladder truck. We got the mobile and the four was covered under a grant for that.
Why wouldn't you grant cover?
It is not considered a, uh, first piece responding piece. Ladder pumpers are, they're not a, 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 a vehicle.
And the radio is for if you're somewhere, so you would know that something's going on?
No, we all, we have mobiles now, or fourables now, we need a mobile. We want six watts, we want forty watts.
Yeah, but what, like, what we can use it for? What we can.
For a fire call.
Okay, so, so if there's fire and you're at home?
Get in the vehicle, tell them to respond and go to the fire and hopefully put it out.
Okay. So, there, there's an acting chief who has the, the jeep. You've shared monthly, correct?
We rotate it.
You rotate it between the assistant chiefs and yourself. So, a fire call comes in, you're in your jeep, you're responding not to the fire department, but you're responding right to the scene. That acting chief is going to take over that scene. So, yes. That's my idea.
How is it flying out?
For a fourable.
All, all the chiefs and assistants in the jeep, that's all. So, Tom, respond with the radio?
Well, for landing helicopters, we definitely need the radios, but one would be a fourable state, a mobile state identity. It's just a stronger signal, forty watts compared to six watts.
Thank you.
Very good difference.
Tom, the four chiefs, would you individually each get four?
Yes. Because you're a chief of, for a couple, what you got on for you? Part to answer your question is, is that I forgot about that. So, I apologize for not being prepared to really figure that one out. So, that's why I was asking, obviously, it was in the minutes of September. Uh, I will review it with everybody and we'll have an answer for you our next meeting.
I'm referring.
So, again, I apologize, that was my, my fault.
Any other unfinished? Cause I'll, I'll read every state about this, I'll be nice to property, it still looks terrible. I, I really suggest I would do something using our housing unit. If, if, if the owner is absent, or, or, maybe it's, I mean, as we, at some point, we're gonna have to do something.
The first part of business, best choice would be to. Do we want to own it first? Great hustle up here, please. This is the fire, fire damage property in town. This is probably what we would consider.
Do we want to own it first? I don't know what we have to, I, I don't want to wait till we own it. The, the property owner is not, they're not, they haven't looked up at the places. Haven't paid their, they haven't paid their loans. The big, the big expense would be to tear it down and shore up the next building. But even, what, what we're told, because of the height of the building and the malleys of the building, leaving that unstanding is, 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 the building needs to stand, is a fourable.
Is it structurally sound the way it is if we just wore to, to saw the outside? I mean, is it? Look at that. Mike, I mean, again, it's always best to own it. Is it okay to go to our neighbor's house and throw some siding on it?
Yeah, we can prove it. You can't see it, but we can prove it's property.
I mean, my thought would be to go right over top sheet, the whole thing, go right over top of the windows, the whole, the bulk, right? That would be, that would be the best bet because there's, you know, you know, there's been enough damage. Is, is there an issue with mold or anything on the inside that's gonna be an issue for the neighbor as well? I mean, because all we're doing is encapsulating whatever's there.
I spoke to that gentleman on Friday and he's in contact with thirteen. So, he's, he's saying that Moncrief's in the bank's hand.
No, it's not.
I can say she owns that stuff.
Yeah, but she's not, she's.
She's in regular contact with her. We have a preferred address in Oldham for her.
We have a.
We, we, we know where she's at. She's elsewhere in town.
Yeah.
But, uh, doesn't respond to anything, doesn't come to hearings. There was a hearing, uh, about two weeks ago, uh, she called and said she'd be running late and then just didn't show up.
Kevin, who stays by about fifteen hundred to put something on there? Where was it? Second thousand?
I think I have a warrant.
We don't have to do this tonight, I just want, I just want to kick this right out.
Yes.
We think you're good as such.
I, I mean, I, I certainly agree, it's a nice, I'm throwing some, throwing siding on it, certainly make it look better. But like, if someone, we all see all the mold and everything that we give inside, uh, the mostly property next door, uh, that would have to get them to go.
He complained about the pole. There's my installation, we get some, there's no wall between him and that house.
So, if anybody has any contact with the property owner, if, if you, please call Kevin, if you, if I can help him resolve their issue. Is the issue there? Any other unfinished business? Bills and claims? Hello?
Yes, I think we reviewed the bills, uh, yesterday, so I made the motion to, uh, the.
The bill?
Kerry, myself and his son, was reading off some of the comments today.
Motion by Kerry, second by Dan. Anybody have any questions or comments? Everybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone who pulls a no? Yeah, that's happened. Any unfinished business? Back in session, will be the possibility.
Sure.
There's a motion by Kerry. There is a second. Although there's, the motion by Dave, second by Dan, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And who pulls a no? If I've got it.